I'd like to call the September 13th, 2013 Meeting of the Board of Education to order. First item on the agenda, the invocation. Ms. Etheridge?
Good evening. I'd like to read another chapter in "Don't Sweat the Small Stuff." And it's all small stuff, by Richard Carlson. Spend a moment every day thinking of someone to thank. This simple strategy, which may take only a few seconds to complete, has long been one of the most important habits I have ever engaged in. I try to remember to start my day thinking of someone to thank. To me gratitude and inner peace go hand in hand. The more genuinely grateful I feel for the gift of my life, the more peaceful I feel. Gratitude then is worthy of a little practice. If you're anything like me, you probably have many people in your life to feel grateful for: friends, family, people from your past, teachers, gurus, people from work, someone who gave you a break, as well as countless others. You may want to thank a higher power for the gift of life itself, or for the beauty of nature. As you think of people to be grateful for, remember that it can be anyone: someone who allowed you to merge into traffic, someone who held the door open for you, or a physician who saved your life. The point is to gear your attention toward gratitude, preferably first thing in the morning. I learned a long time ago that it's easy to allow my mind to slip into various forms of negativity. When I do, the first thing that leaves me is my sense of gratitude. I begin to take the people in my life for granted, and the love that I often feel is replaced with resentment and frustration. What this exercise reminds me to do is to focus on the good in my life. Invariably, as I think of one person to feel gratitude for, the image of another person pops into my head, then another, and another. Pretty soon, I'm thinking of other things to be grateful for: my health, my children, my home, my career, and on and on it goes. It may seem like an awfully simple suggestion, but it really works. If you wake up in the morning with gratitude on your mind, it's pretty difficult, in fact, almost impossible, to feel anything but peace. Thank you.
Okay, now, may we have a moment of silence? Thank you. And now, Principal Terry Gottfried from Shawboro Elementary will introduce the young lady who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, Dr. Dobney, the Schola members of the board. Tonight, I have with me the beautiful Justice Holly, who's one of our fifth grade students who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you all please rise?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice, thank you very much. And now, the school spotlight is also on Shawboro Elementary, and once again, I'll turn it over to Ms. Gottfried.
Dr. Dobney, this year has gotten off to a fantastic start. So if you would bear with me just a minute, I would just really like to thank the Shawboro School family, which includes my staff, my students, my parents, and our community, because we have had a wonderful beginning. Today, we had 215 grandparents and special friends to join us for lunch, so we're excited, and I just wanted to thank them publicly. Last year, we had a group of teachers that we brought, and we talked about the ACE program, and they were all excited about what they were going to do with this program. One of the teachers who really got involved and planned and collaborated with everybody was our art teacher, Mrs. Virginia Schwallen. So I'm going to turn it over to her, and she'll explain the program and introduce our students.
Thank you for this opportunity to explain one of the programs that we did last year with the Shawboro and Moyoc Elementary School students. I have some assistant students with me, so I'd like to introduce them first. I have Justice Holly, if you'll come up, and Hannah Hodge. They were in fourth grade when we did this last year, and they're in fifth grade this year, helping me. And I also have Gabe Taylor and Stedman Reynolds, if you'll come up. They are now second graders, but they were in first grade when we did our project. If I can put your attention to my slide up here. Basically, the ACE program is aerospace civilian education. So that's what ACE stands for. And it was a way to incorporate science, technology, physics, and mathematics into all the core curriculum. And I saw it as an opportunity to also make it for art, too. And it was an opportunity for the kids to do the hands-on science things and build the projects in the art classroom, and allow the teachers to have time to just teach the other parts of it. So it was a collaborative effort with me and the teachers as well. The first one that we did... How do I get it to move on? Usually you just click it? Okay, well, maybe the technology didn't sink in with me. The first project we did was Bernoulli's tongue, and some of you saw this at our highlight last year at the Shawboro Elementary. These are actually Moyoc kids, but we made masks in art, and we studied the Northwest Indians. And the Bernoulli's physics principle was the ACE lesson, and they were to make a mask and have a tongue that sticks out. So we used tissue paper, and the whole idea is that you blow through the mask's mouth hole, and the principle of lift is what keeps an airplane in flight, kept the tongue sticking out. So the kids had a lot of fun with that one. The next one is my second graders are going to show you what they did last year with their boomerangs. And, boys, do you want to just kind of explain what you did, how you decorated your boomerangs?
We decorated our boomerangs with the Aboriginal symbols that were made almost a thousand years ago.
Very good. Can you hold them up so that they can see? And then, they've been practicing this, they've been flying them, so they would like to demonstrate that for you. Sometimes they come back, sometimes they don't. That one came back. Good job, boys. Thank you. I don't have my third graders here, but in third grade, we did the cloud pastels, and I called these big sky pictures, and the kids did. We learned about John Constable, who is a famous artist, English artist, a landscape artist. And we incorporated the ACE lesson of the cloud types. And second grade also studies the water cycle. So instead of just coloring a sheet with a water cycle on it, they were able to incorporate this into their art. And as you can see, this child is doing something with cumulus clouds and maybe stratus clouds, I think. He's got some rain in there. And they really got into this. They had sheets that had the types of clouds on there, and you should have heard the discussions in there. They were like, "Oh, how am I going to get..." They had to put two types of clouds in their picture. I made them do that. And then, we had beautiful pictures underneath. Now, unfortunately, when I took these pictures, they weren't finished, but they really had a good time with it, and the pastels turned out great. All right. My girls are going to talk about the Earth, Moon, and Mars lesson that we did for ACE. And I think the most impressive part was about scale. And we talk about scale, like if... In art, it's a really hard concept to teach kids not to make this giant house and these itty-bitty people, or itty-bitty houses and giant people. And so, we talked about scale in art, and how it's so important, if you're trying to leave something realistic looking, to get the scale correct, and to make it look like it belongs in the picture. And oftentimes, and I brought this in, because I had to show you, I got this off the Internet, oftentimes, we as teachers give them a worksheet that looks like this, and if you look at the scale of the Earth and Mars, girls, can you tell them what's wrong with that picture?
Earth and Mars aren't the same size. In fact, Earth is bigger than Mars is.
Okay, by how many times? How many moons did we fit into the Earth?
We fit 15 moons inside the Earth.
Okay, and how many moons did it take to make Mars?
Eight.
That's a huge difference. Now, we brought these two. This is supposed to be basketball, but I didn't have a basketball. So go ahead and explain what you're going to show them about the scale that most people think.
Okay. Most people think that the moon is closer to Earth, like at least that far away from Earth, but the truth is that it's really about this far away.
Wow. It's pretty impressive when you see it, and most people really don't think, because it's been illustrated so many times with the Earth and the moon so close to each other in pictures. Come on back. Okay, thank you, girls. We showed the video clips, and the MIT graduate student was interviewing people on the street, and nine out of 10 people got that one wrong. They did not know. And I would have said the same thing. I would have gone, "Oh, like this," you know? All right. Last thing I wanted to talk to you about is how many hours we got in. Because of the impact schedule we have at Shawboro, I was able to get collaboratively, and I had teachers come in and do these lessons with me. We got about 40 hours' worth of integrated art and science lessons in last year. So I was able to do nine different lessons, but then that's across a grade level, so times that by four. And we got... And then Moyoc as well. So it was a very successful program, and I plan on continuing to do that with our students. And I hope you enjoyed our presentation. Thank you.
Ms. Schwallen, Justice Pam, Gabe, and Stedman, thank you for your presentation. We really enjoyed it. I wouldn't have got the moon and the Earth. Okay, next, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, work session update. At 4 o'clock, we had a work session, and we received a draft of rules and procedures for book checkout in the libraries. We received a personnel update and tenure status from Ann Mackin, our Human Resources Director. We also received a presentation from Paul O'Brien about state and grade, and of course proficiency rates. Next, we had information given to us about job shadowing through the Chamber of Commerce and the Extension Office. Then we received an update on the Chromebook Initiative, review of homework policy, CCHS graduation date discussion, North Carolina School Board's Action Center, and the 7,000-level policies. So it was a long work session. Next, we will have the election of our student board members. And do I have a motion that we elect Alexandra Carter and Katie Trailer as our new student board members?
I motion that we elect those.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, that we elect Alexandra Carter and Katie Trailer as our student board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Alexandra and Katie will be our new student board members. And next, we will have the swearing-in of our student board members, and the honor will be done by Ray Matusko, Clerk of Superior Court. Do you, Alexandra Carter and Katie Trailer, solemnly swear that you'll support the Constitution of the United States, to help you out? Do you further solemnly and sincerely swear that you'll be faithful and faithful allegiance to the state of North Carolina, to the constitutional powers and authorities which are maybe in state, and that you will maintain and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, say, "Help you out." And do you further swear that you'll perform the duties of student board member for the Currits County Schools, to the best of your knowledge, skill, and ability, say, "Help you out."
I do.
Congratulations. Alexandra, Katie, have a seat up front. That was the easy part. Okay, next, we'll have our student board member report. Thomas Poston and Rick Loggie.
Hi. The school year is off to a great start, as others have said tonight. The new Chromebooks have been distributed, and teachers are finding all sorts of ways to utilize that new technology in the classroom: finding educational resources online, assigning work to do for students, and maintaining teacher and student communications. So they're a great tool already. Students at the high school will order their class rings next Wednesday, the 18th. The CCHS Fellowship of Christian Athletes would like to invite all CCHS students to their Fields of Faith event on September 14th, from 5:30 to 7:30. It should be a fun night of music, games, testimony, and fellowship. In athletics, the CCHS varsity and JV volleyball teams will travel to First Flight tomorrow night, but they will face Northeastern and Perquimens later this week at home. Come support the Lady Knights at CCHS on Wednesday, beginning at 4:30, and on Thursday at 4:00. And the CCHS football team has started the season with a bang, with a current record of 3-0 after defeating Gates, Manio, and Camden. This Friday, the Knights will take on First Flight High School at home. Come support the Knights at this very important game. Kickoff is at 7:30. Don't forget your red. Now, I'll pass it to Rick.
So JP Knapp opened up this year really wonderfully. Seniors are taking their senior portraits, and juniors are about to order their class rings. Elementary school book fairs are starting off today with Jarvisburg Elementary, and the rest of the elementary schools in the county will follow soon after. I'd like to welcome Alex and Katie, formally, to the board. It's really great to have you guys on.
Won't put you on the spot, but if you do have anything to add, Alexandra or Katie? Otherwise, we'll just wait till next meeting. Next, 2013-14 Student Art Contest winners. Superintendent Scholler, Board of Education, and assisted by Sandy Kendall, Assistant Superintendent. Do you want us down front?
I would love for you to join me. Since you're going to be up here, I'm going to turn.
Each year, the Board of Education sponsors a contest where students submit original artwork to be considered for selection in the publication of the system's annual art calendar. And over the 18-year history of this art calendar, the student art has just been magnificent, and it continues to get better each and every year. And the participation has grown considerably over the years' time, too. The quality of the artwork certainly is a reflection of our art teachers and their talents in helping students really develop their skill, as evidenced tonight by the presentation with our art teacher from Moyoc and Shawboro. So we would like to recognize, along with Ms. Schwallen, who is here tonight, the other art teachers that work across the district, and that would be Tammy Kite, Heather Garner, Lisa Doxy, Megan Stadler, Anita Rubino Thomas, and Claire Vinnick. So again, we want to thank them. Prior to our meeting, we invited all the contest winners into the central office for a reception, where their artwork was on display, and will remain on display for the remainder of the school year. So tonight, we'd like to recognize those students and present them with their awards. Little direction, as we call names, we would like for you to start at the end with Ms. Scholler, and work your way back through the line, and then remain standing up here, so that we can take one group photo when we're finished. So we'll start with recognizing the 9 through 12 Senior Division. Honorable mentions were given to Justin Gross from the high school. If you're here, please come forward. Shay Brunson. She's going to do the line twice, I want you to know. Brianna Bommer. Austin Aviles. Harley Rui. Oh, very good. We've got a stand-in. Way to go, Mom! Very good. Thank you. Our third-place winner in this category was Harley Rui. Our second-place winner was Hannah Antonz. And our first-place and cover art winner, and I will show this, we will see if we can post this on website, but it truly is beautiful. And we'd like to recognize Shay Brunson for her first-place art. Pointing out, this year, we learned from 18 years, and this year, the cover artist is actually going to be shown during the month. This is the first time we've included it inside, so she won't be covered up. So, all right. In our 9 through 12 category for photography, our honorable mentions were Sandra Boger, Austin Aviles, twice, Dakota Newell from JP Knapp. Again, another Austin Aviles. We've had lots of artists submit multiple pieces. Our third-place winner for photography was Dakota Newell from JP Knapp. Our second-place winner for photography was Harley Pace. That was from the high school. There he is. Here he comes. Thank you. And our first-place winner was Austin, and he is not here, but we'll make sure he gets his just rewards. Thank you. Our 6 through 8 category winners, again, honorable mentions were Phoebe Lees. Is she here tonight? Eddie Fredin, Julie Tubbs, Colton Baker, Hannah Sarr. Our third-place winner was Eddie Fredin, who's not here. Taryn Breathwaite is our second-place winner for this category. And our first-place winner, I know she's here, I met her, is Jerica Bope. Yeah, there she is. She's going to steal the stage. In our grades 3 through 5 category, our honorable mentions were Haley Stevens, Emily Carroll. She is. Robert Miller. Piper Antonz. Bianca Burgos. Sidney McDonald. And Braden Starboard. Our third-place winner in this category was Alex Marlowe. Second-place winner was Heidi Kenselak. Did I say that right? Did I? Say it again. Go figure. And our first-place winner in this category was Christian Spencer. There's Christian. Congratulations. And finally, in our K2 category, our honorable mentions were Abby Lamb, Angel Furman, Beth Ann Whackerly, and she is actually from Central, and we did make a boo-boo on that and put her over at Knott's Island, so I apologize for that. Honorable mention, Jamie Lee Taylor. And she gets to go through the line twice. And Olivia Burns. Here she comes. Jamie, come right over here a second, sweetie. All right. Our third-place winner in that category, Sidney Younger. There you go. Liz Carzner, her second place. And our first-place winner is Jamie Lee Taylor. Coming back through. You're going to cut right to the chase on this one. This is first place. I got a check here. We did... Our first-place winners all received a check, our second place and a plaque, and our second-place winner's got a check and a plaque, and our third-place winner's got a plaque. And everybody got a certificate, and we want to thank everybody for their participation. So if we'll get you all gathered together, give you a round of applause, and we'll get one picture, okay? Come on. I will get out of the way, I promise. This one's going to go to the paper. Okay? You got it? Let me just do one. Jamie Lee, hold your board up if you're putting it. Set. All right, now I'm out of the way. Any of our artists did not get their calendars, please see me, and I have extras with me.
We have a lot of younger students here, so if you'd like to just take a moment, and you'd like to leave and go home, you can do it right now. I'd like to say while they're filing out, you know, it's really nice that our school system can nurture this artistic talent. Congratulations once again to our young artists. Okay, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval? Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, public comments session.
We have one person signed up, Sandy Kinsel, Assistant Superintendent.
I have a lot of good news to share tonight, so thank you for indulging me. I just wanted to publicly recognize two of our schools in the district that are Title I schools and were recently recognized as Title I Reward Schools by DPI, and this is a state recognition. I'd like to congratulate the students and staff of Jarvisburg Elementary and WT Griggs Elementary School. Jarvisburg was selected for this recognition based on assessment data from the 2011 and '12 school year and the two previous school year's data. Jarvisburg met the criteria for being a high-progress school, which means that they are among the best in the state and making the most progress in improving the performance of their students, of all their students. This is the second time that Jarvisburg has been recognized as a reward school under the Title I Reward School Program, so that's pretty impressive. And I'd also like to say that this is the second time that WT Griggs has been recognized for such of an honor. Griggs has had... They've been singled out as, let's see what they're calling it. Theirs is for high performance. So there are two different categories for recognition. And again, it was based on two previous year's data, along with the '11-'12 school year's data. And they were among the best in the state for having the highest overall performance for their... All of their students and their subgroups, based on the assessment data. As you know, this data... This might be measured by the outcome data at the end of the year on one single assessment, but it doesn't happen in one day. It's based on a lot of hard work and dedication from the staff and the students for that matter, to be able to show that kind of results at the end. So we're very proud of these two schools, and we'd like to publicly recognize them for their achievements. Thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations to the staff. Congratulations to the staff and students of Jarvisburg and Griggs and Superintendent Scholler. If you'd pass on our congratulations to them on behalf of the board. Okay, next, information items. We will have a joint meeting with our county commissioner September 23rd, 2013, at the County Extension Building. Our next work session will be October 14th at 4:00 at NAP Professional Learning Center. And if there's not that much on the agenda, we may change that to 5:00. Our next board meeting will be October 14th at 7:00, right here. Next, board member comments. Ms. Kraft?
Yes. I see most of the Charboro Elementary School students have left, but I just want to tell Mrs. Godfrey and Mrs. Stark and Mrs. Swollen, if she's still here, congratulations, and thank you for having your students here tonight. Also, all the art calendar winners, and Alexandria and Katie, we welcome you.
Ms. Cass?
I just want to kind of say congratulations to everybody also, including our new school board members, who've got a lot of stuff to look forward to. It'll be a lot of fun, and we hope to get to know you. We also, I want to say, like Ms. Godfrey said, and I think everybody said tonight, we're off to a great beginning for the school year. We're hearing great things from all the principals and administration, and we appreciate that. And lastly, it got mentioned slightly, but I want to point out, Happy Grandparents' Day to all the grandparents out there, because that was this past week, and it's great that all the schools had such a good turnout with the grandparents coming out.
Ms. Cass?
Yes. Same sentiments. I'd like to congratulate all our student art calendar participants and the award winners. We've got some real talent here in the county, and it shows tonight at the reception for them. They had their artwork on display, and we've got some talented kids in our community. I'd also like to congratulate Alex and Katie. Look forward to working with y'all. Glad you're on our team, and I look forward to just working with you hand in hand. Congratulations.
Mr. Simmons?
Same sentiments. Welcome aboard. I've had a chance to go to our convocation with the rest of our board and see all of our teachers there at one time, welcome them back. I had a chance to sit at our open house, and our students had a chance to come by and meet their teachers. It was really a nice evening to see all the students come by and stop by the library and talk to a board member that was sitting in there and other teachers. It was just nice to see our kids coming back. It's that time of year, again, our football teams. Had a chance to see the JV play twice. I've had a chance to see the varsity. If you come by our fields and the lights are on, stop. You're going to see some good athletics here in Crook County. Help support them, and you'll enjoy them. Thank you.
And I, too, would like to thank all our contest participants for art. Nobody appreciates student art more than me, because I'm artistically not inclined. Can't even draw a stick figure right. And I'd also like to thank, once again, Shay Brunson. She did an excellent job on the cover. Just amazing. Alexandra, Katie, the others, welcome. I'll try not to put you on the spot again. And with that, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Remove.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.